Good evening and welcome to the August 30th, 2012, meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the Board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire Board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. The first item, excuse me, I would like, yeah, sorry. First, we would like to have the Board members introduce themselves and then city staff.
Richard Kristoff, 4th Ward.
Sam Siccarelli, 3rd Ward.
Rosemary Care, 2nd Ward.
Stuart Dixon, 2nd Ward.
Lloyd Culbertson, 4th Ward.
Kathy Cerniak, Director of Communities Development.
And now I'm going to ask, well, we'll talk about the first petition briefly, just consideration of requests for setback variances for additions to an existing residence at 135 South Maywood Road. The owner is Stuart S. Dixon, Jr., and his representative is Matthew Kerewak, architect. Do any Board members have conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report?
I have a statement, Madam Chairwoman, that I'd like to read. In the spirit of transparency and consistent with the City of Lake Forest Code of Ethics, Madam Chairwoman, I'll be recusing myself as tonight's first petition is being brought forward by myself and Architect Matt Kerewak. At this time, I'll be excusing myself from the room and observing the proceedings from the lower-level committee chambers. So I will excuse myself at this time, and thank you.
Did you want to?
And before we begin the discussion on 135 South Maywood, we would like to consider approval of the minutes of the July 23rd, 2012 meeting. Have all Board members had the opportunity to read the minutes?
Yes.
Any comments?
None.
Would a Board member care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second that motion.
Then the minutes of the July 23rd, 2012 meeting are accepted. And now back to 135 South Maywood Road. Is Mr. Kerewak here? Hi. And I would ask at this time if there is anyone who plans to speak during the meeting on this particular agenda item. I think we'll do it one agenda item at a time. Would you please step forward and we can swear you in? Mr. Kerewak, I think it's just you. Okay.
I will need to, I can't get the, I don't know if there's someone that can get the
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
I do.
And state your name, please, for the record?
My name is Matthew Kerewak.
And Matthew, you're the architect?
Yes, I am.
Of this proposal?
Yes.
And would you please present your petition?
Sure. If it pleases the Board, first I'd like to thank Kathy Cerniak and Megan O'Neil for all their assistance for this submittal. This request is for approval of two setback variances, a corner side yard setback variance from the west property line to allow front porch, expanded second floor, and garage addition, and a rear yard setback variance from the south property line to allow the expanded garage. The existing one-half story residence consists of three bedrooms and a single car garage. In addition, it's required to accommodate the needs of a growing household. The project will allow the addition of a new second floor children's bedroom, bathroom, and play study area. Additionally, a new two-car garage will be added to provide required storage for the children's bikes and accessories and allow for parking of one additional automobile. The cottage-style residence, second story, is contained within the roof with dormers and bedrooms, at the bedrooms and the bath. The addition will maintain this aesthetic while providing the required new spaces. A new covered porch was added to the front of the residence to provide coverage for visiting guests at the front door and for balancing the entry with the new addition. The two existing bay windows which flinked the entry along the front of the residence created a need for the elevation-wide porch. We are, it's a very hard image to see. Thank you for your patience. What we are asking for is, our existing corner front yard setback is 40 feet from Maywood Road. So the existing encroaches into that. The hash mark shows the existing residence. What we're asking for is a variance from that corner set yard, front yard setback to accommodate a new porch, the addition of a first floor and second floor expansion, and then the garage. On the south side, the garage will need a rear yard setback to accommodate its expansion. From the front, you can see the, our variance will take up this portion of the new garage. From the south elevation, the blue shows our new construction, which will require the variance, and the red hatching is showing the existing construction that's already within a non-conforming condition. From the north, you see the red showing our existing construction within the setback, and then the blue showing what the new construction is. And then from the rear, the area within the garage addition, which will require the variance. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
All right, thank you. For now, then, Kathy, would you please identify the issues from the staff perspective?
Sure. This property is located in an established neighborhood, the Northmore neighborhood, right across the street from South Park. It is a neighborhood of very small lots. It's one of those neighborhoods that you see often where many of the homes encroach into one or more of the setback areas because the area was developed before the current zoning setbacks were put in place. So these properties are always difficult to expand because of that challenge. This is an area where many homes have been expanded. We have seen a fair number of front yard setbacks as porches are developed, often see some side yard setbacks as second floor, second floor spaces added, not often rear yard setbacks, but we have seen the other setbacks. This property is made even more challenging by the fact that it's located on a corner. So you have the front yard, which in the case of this property, is the north side of the property. The front yard, by definition of the zoning code, is the narrowest street frontage. So it is, from a common perspective, we'd look at it and call that the side of the house, but the portion of the property that fronts on Northmore is actually the front yard. The portion of the property that fronts on Maywood is the corner side yard. Both of those require a 40-foot setback based on today's zoning code requirements. The south side of the property, the end of the house where the garage is, is considered the rear yard. A 35-foot setback is required in that area. And the east side of the property is termed a side yard, and that's a 10-foot setback. So just to orient you, corner yard, corner side yard properties are always a bit confusing. As Mr. Kerewak described, this is a proposal to expand an existing house to accommodate the needs of the family. Certainly, the Zoning Board and the Building Review Board have historically encouraged modest alterations to homes as opposed to simply tearing them down and starting over. In this case, the areas of the home that are affected, the existing link between the main house and the garage will be both brought forward and extended in height. The height of the garage will be increased to allow for living space, and the front porch will be brought forward to enhance the overall aesthetic and functionality of that front entrance. This was before the Building Review Board, just earlier this month. The Building Review Board did continue this item. They, I believe, appointed a subcommittee.
They did.
Am I correct? Okay. Appointed a subcommittee to look at refinement opportunities for the massing, to look at some design aspects. In general, they stated support for the intent to expand this home, but were just concerned in some areas about the massing and the extent, whether there can be some refinement in that area. They were concerned about the potential prominence of the garage with this proposed change, and concerned whether the garage, as designed and as cited, would actually become the focal point of the home along Maywood. So this matter, we'll go back to the Building Review Board at their next meeting with some refinements, but again, they were supportive of the general intent to expand the property. You do have in your staff report findings that support the requested variances, and if you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to provide a condition that makes your approval subject to the Building Review Board finding an acceptable design and acceptable massing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. What's the differential in the height over the existing garage?
I will direct that to the petitioner.
Sure. It's about seven feet from the peak of the existing to the new.
With the rebuilding of the garage, you'll also have to rework the driveway.
That's correct.
And the pavers.
That's correct.
And I assume the pavers will be reworked to create a walkway to the backyard as well.
That's correct. Right. Right now, we have a mixture of asphalt and paver. We're maintaining that and then extending the pavers to the south to accommodate the wider garage, but the asphalt quantity will stay the same.
I would ask staff, does that have any effect on the setback considerations?
No, an at-grade path or an at-grade surface does not need to comply with the zoning setback.
Well, I have a question. If no other Board members have a question at this time. You're asking for a very slight variance on what is the rear yard.
On the south, yes.
On the garage, one and a half feet. Is there any way that you could accommodate this within the setback?
Our challenge is with this one-and-a-half-story construction, we have a very steeped, you know, 12-by-12 roof pitch, and to get the two bedrooms above the garage and to maintain a quality of life within that pitch, we are trying to maximize and give us adequate garage and maximize that room, you know, on the second floor for the bedrooms. I'm not going to say we're not, you know, if it's a deal breaker to move it back, I look at the other way, you know, the 1.39 feet gives us a lot of space, you know, helps that space upstairs and the garage become more usable for us, and I can appreciate why that little bit, if we just remove it, simplifies this process and may make the project a little bit more appealing. We're just trying to get the best project out of this very humble and quaint house, and we felt that maintaining that little bit larger floor plan aided in our, you know, want to get the best space up there. Because we can't, with our peak, we don't, you know, if we split that garage, it's 24, really, we can only use half of it because of the pitch. So we're going to 12 feet on the outside. If we come in 1.39, we're at, you know, 10.6 on the inside, on the outside plus construction, and within that, our dormer setback another foot. So we're looking at an eight-foot by, you know, maybe 10-foot bedrooms on the upstairs. And we're trying to, you know, give us, with the, you know, cost of construction, give us at least space that feels reasonable for those bedrooms. Because that setback is only for the first floor of the construction. The dormer part is within the setback. Or it's what, you know, I'm sorry, it's outside of the setback requirement.
I have a question. Getting back to the height, just to clarify this for me.
Sure.
How does the height, the additional seven feet, how's that compare to the height of 631 East Northmore, which I think is next door?
Sure. You know, I don't, that's a, I don't have the height on that, but it's a much taller structure.
Mm-hmm.
Probably by, I would be guessing, which is always a bad thing to do, but it's a wider body. So if we look at the same pitch, add a wider body, it's going to be proportionately taller. I can't sit here and say it's five feet taller, but it's significantly taller and noticeable between the two residences.
You're saying which one is more, is taller?
I believe that 631 Northmore, if you look at where their dormers on the front of their house is.
Right.
And you look at where the dormers on ours, and, you know, assuming that's 6.8, we have a ladder roof above 631 versus ours.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
You're comfortable that the parameters of setbacks that we establish tonight are ones you would be able to work within, given any redesign that comes by way of the Building Review Board?
Yes. What, my understanding, what the Building Review Board, and I don't want to speak for them, their concerns were with the shed dormer over the garage, our pitch is pretty shallow, and they would like to see that lowered a little bit. We're fighting, again, for space. The more we shift that in a smaller room, the more impact it has, so we'll be working with them on that. And they actually suggested on the porch, to raise the porch up to make it more prominent, and then do something with the barrel vault at the entry. That's up for discussion. So I believe our goals will be the same, and we're willing to work with, you know, both Boards. And within the setbacks that we're requesting, we should be able to achieve that.
And I could offer that if you, the Zoning Board chose to approve this, if the Building Review Board work resulted in a design that encroached to a lesser extent, that would not need to come back before you. If the design encroached to a greater extent than what is before you, that would need to come back before you.
Let's hope that's not the case.
I'm questioning the garage in that about a year or so ago, and generally, the Zoning Board has been supportive of taking a one-car garage and expanding it to two, simply because of lifestyle.
Sure.
When I went back to look at one that we had approved at the corner of Winston and Highview, which I think was even a more compact site, the garage was closer to the street. And so now with the two-car garage there, it's a very short apron to the street. How long an apron are you going to have with this garage?
30 feet. To the lat line is 30 feet, nine inches. And we cannot add to the back of the residence, we can't, because we have an existing oak tree. We met with the forester. He stated he would not allow any construction past existing construction. That was one of our fir-, you know, can't we split the difference? And he said, "We cannot," because of the drip line and the root system back there.
So the idea of a step back, new one-car garage, it would affect the oak tree?
It would. I would say that moving the garage forward is still setback behind the primary residence, you know, so we're not moving in front of the existing residence.
Well, at 30 feet, you would be back more significantly than this other house. Do Board members have any comments or other questions?
No.
Any comments from staff?
Nothing at this time.
Is there any public testimony on the issue? Would a Board member care to make a proposal?
I move to recommend the approval of the variance as submitted. Based on the findings stated on page 2 through 4, the staff report dated August 30th, 2012, subject to acceptance by the Building Review Board for the massing. Bleak staff report, the materials included in the packet and the public testimony incorporated is part of the findings.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion is passed.
Thank you for your consideration.
And Mr. Dixon, Board Member, rejoins us for consideration of the second petition of the evening, a request for an amendment to the special use permit for the Knollwood Club located at 1890 Knollwood Road. The proposed changes include the addition of a paddle court and modifications of an existing paddle court and adjacent parking area. Owner, the Knollwood Club, Representative Randall W. Harper, General Manager. Would all those who believe they may speak on this petition, please step forward? Hi. And your name, sir?
I'm Randall W. Harper, Knollwood, Knollwood.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. I should ask if any Board members have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts?
No.
No? Okay. Mr. Harper, would you please proceed?
Thank you very much for your time tonight. I very much appreciate it, and Kathy Cerniak, I would like to thank her as well, as we've been working together for the last few months to get this project underway. With me this evening, I'd like to introduce three of our Board members. Mr. Frank Pasquazzi is a Board of Governors. In the middle is Mr. David Brush. He is our Capital Planning Chairman of the Board of Governors. And Mr. Tony Kessman, our current President of the Club. They all come as a show of support of this project at the club. As many of you know, I'm sure, the Knollwood Club was formed in 1924 based on a premise of providing a community location for sports and social gatherings of citizens of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, and giving them an opportunity to gather in one spot and provide some camaraderie amongst each other. As you pull into the club, we're asking, as you said, an amendment to our special use permit to add a fourth paddle court. This is looking, as you enter the south entrance of the club, and as you turn the corner towards the paddle courts, to the left there with these, behind these fir trees, is our paddle complex. And so as we progress around the corner, that's what our current paddle complex looks like today. There are three courts with the paddle hut, as you can see to the far right. This is a place that is actually behind the, I'm sorry, behind the clubhouse. But one of our reasons for coming forward tonight is our increased participation. Since 2008, we've increased our paddle participants by 66 percent. It's a very large, demanding sector of our membership. They like the paddle program, and they continue to use it. Currently, this season, we have 150 total paddle players, and it's needed for expanded facilities. As you can see from the aerial, this is the clubhouse in the yellow circle. To the bottom-left corner of that is where our paddle courts are situated. So you can see that's behind the clubhouse, located along Knollwood Lane. As it currently exists, this is just a site plan of what, how it exists now. We have two courts that are parallel to each other. This is our third court right here, which is offset, and we propose that that will have to shift to the west in line with the other two existing courts. And then as we progress to add the fourth court, the fourth one shifts up in front of the two. So we'll have three parallel courts to each other and one that's offset. It will fit into that space back there. What happens with these two, there are two trees in the location of the end of the paddle courts that will have to come out. And what I have up on this depiction is a commitment for new landscaping, similar firs and pine trees, as we had, as you saw that first picture, blocking the view from people, anyone coming along Knollwood Road. And then this would also accentuate that area along Knollwood Lane to give more of a buffer to our neighbors going past. Currently, right now, in this location, there's some buckthorn, which we have cleared, and I make a commitment to put some new, well-established trees in that location. One of the concerns also is lighting. This is a lighting depiction, which I apologize for not having in your packet. I just received it this afternoon as I requested from our lighting contractor. What this shows is that the two new courts have eight overhead lights. They're 20 feet high, and those are the same height requirements. lights. They're twenty feet high, and those are the same height requirements established as the, the two courts that we are not relocating. The candle foot, fifty feet outside of the court is .1. So, the current spec lights are more of a downlit structure that we want to place on those two new courts. And we've also decided that it'll be in our best interest, as well as our neighboring best interest, to replace the, the lights on the two existing courts. Those have six lights. We're proposing eight total in each court of a more specific down, direct lighting of those courts, so there's not as much spread as our existing lights have. We looked at some other concerns as, as we've gone along developing this project. Player density, the reason for us doing this is not to drive more people to the paddle courts, it's better usage of our teams. There are eight-member teams, and we've always had, with three courts, we've always had a group sitting out. So, a fourth court will just add to that player participation to make it more expedient and to get through the evenings with what we'd like to, like to do. Also, with player density, the paddle season is October 1st through March 31st, so that's a slow time for the club. And we'll have fewer activities. The golf course obviously is not as open as much, and some, some other activities at the club is a little bit lesser during this timeframe. So, we'll feel that there's fewer members and employees that are, that'll be in the area. Parking, in addition to the player density, we've got some concerns about because of its location behind the clubhouse. The new court will actually take the spot of one existing parking space. We propose in our drawing to replace that in, just in align with the other parking spaces, so we have opportunity to re, to, to pick that one back up. And then, what we're also proposed to do, and we're going to, we'd like to mandate two new policies at the club, that during the paddle season, all employees must park in the club's main parking lot. And the other proposal is that the, as during the paddle season, that any participants arriving that after the parking lot is full, that they must use the club's valet or the main parking lot as well. So, that would deter some of the parking issues that we've, we've had in the past. I already mentioned the, the tree impact. There are two, two significant trees that would have to come down. We propose replacing them inch for inch, as I showed in the previous diagram, starting with the area around the paddle courts to, to really focus on the privacy and the, and the covering in that location. Service, service access, we have deliveries, obviously, when I mentioned, it's behind the clubhouse. We have food deliveries, garbage deliveries, utilities, most of which occurs in the morning. We have very little morning play in the paddle courts. We have a commitment to, with the parking mandates and the new policies, we have a commitment to keep those ingress egress routes open, so there will not be issues with paddle participants as well as the deliveries simultaneously. Lighting, as I mentioned, the, the two new courts, the relocation of the third court and the new court will have eight fixtures, 400 watts each, stadium-style reflectors and bulbs. Again, it's our policy, it's our, we strive to minimize the effect of overflow lighting to our neighbors. Another commitment that I spoke to our electrical engineer about is that we will place an automatic timer on our light system, so they will be automatically turned off at 11 o'clock at night. We feel that that's, that's important for us to do for the, for the well-being of our neighbors. We had some communication with, with direct neighbors to the west of us. We had, I believe we worked out some of, some of the concerns of, about parking and the lighting through what we proposed. We've, we've cleared back some of the buckthorn that's, that's exhibiting over the road, and so we've, we've made, make a commitment to keep the area clean and tidy and make it presentable to our neighbors as well as the club. Thank you very much for your time. Be happy to take questions. We want to continue to work cooperatively with the city and our neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. And now, we would like to hear identification of the issues from city staff.
Thank you, Chairman Kerr. As Mr. Harper noted, we have been talking about the desire of the club to add a paddle court for a few months now. And as with any non-residential use in a residential area, that is a special use permit, whenever we look at expansion, we really step back and try to look at not just the incremental addition or change that's being requested, but, but really look at the bigger picture, see if there are existing problems that can be resolved, and just look at the overall site, so that there are no unintended consequences, and so that we really take advantage of, of working to make sure these non-residential uses continue to be good neighbors. Obviously, since you have this petition and the next one, there's a, a growing interest or, or a higher interest than in the past for paddle tennis. So, we kind of have, have that as a baseline that, that's been, come through loud and clear to us. The Knollwood Club is a bit different than the Winter Club, which is the next agenda item. The Knollwood Club was actually platted as a subdivision of homes, residential lots interspersed on a golf course. So, it was always recognized that there would be this recreational component of the subdivision along with the private homes. So, it was designed in that manner. I provided a little bit of background about the history. The club was established long before there was a requirement for special use permits for non-residential uses. As the club, through the years, the club came in, the city did recognize the existing use, and there have been some expansions, and those are reviewed briefly in the staff report. When Mr. Harper first came to talk with, with staff, we did first step back and look at alternatives. We looked at both alternatives at that, at the location of the current paddle courts. We did identify early on that this proposed location would impact two significant trees. We certainly understand that the Knollwood Club has many, many, many significant trees throughout its grounds. However, based on the ordinance, our job is always to try and protect high-quality, healthy trees, of which these were. So, we did look at other configurations. We looked at, at turning the court, we looked at shifting the court, we looked at locating it at the other end of, of the three existing courts. And there were good reasons why none of those scenarios were pursued. We also stepped way back and said, going forward, is this the right location? Is this the best place for, for paddles? So, we did challenge the club, and they did look at that, and they provided a response to all those questions about alternatives in their statement of intent. After looking at that, they did come forward with the proposal that's before you now. Through the staff report, we really identified the issues that we saw. Lighting is always key with a use like this. I think the replacement of the lights on the existing court is a positive move. That isn't reflected in here, but perhaps that's, it's, it's been offered, perhaps that's something that, that should be incorporated in the conditions if you choose to move forward. Looking very closely at the lighting fixtures to make sure the right fixtures are selected. Obviously, the lighting needs to be at a certain intensity to support play, but there, there should also be consideration of adding louvers to particular lights that are along the perimeter. And again, we do that in many locations, we do that for churches, we do that in many installations, and we know that that is practical. So, we know trees were an issue. We knew trees, lighting was an issue. In this particular case, we, upon visiting the site several times, we know that parking is an issue. The existing parking lot does not meet the capacity of how it's used right now. And, and that's why, at staff's request, the club did bring forward some other proposals. The parking lot, just from a safety perspective, because the service portions of the club are accessed through this lot, cars simply cannot be parked hazardly in this lot or double parked. So, one of the conditions as recommended is that we get in a clear plan for the parking lot. We work with our engineers to make sure it's feasible, to make sure there's the right turning radius or backup movement to allow it to function appropriately, and most importantly, to allow a circulation route for delivery trucks, for trash pickup, and for emergency vehicles should, should an incident occur, requiring the access to the back end of the club there. In addition, it currently appears that some of the parking is occurring under some, some other significant trees on the property, so we would encourage that a parking lot plan being reviewed also provide for protection of those trees as well. You did receive two letters in your packet, both from adjoining neighbors, so I wanted to make sure you knew that. I know that at least one of those property owners intended to be here, maybe running late and maybe have a conflict, but wanted to, Mr. Bartlett did want to me to convey to, to you that his intent is to be here this evening. Mr. Harper did mention, did show a landscape plan, and I just wanted to note, we haven't had a chance to review that yet. So, prior to any removal of any vegetation, whether it's trees or, or buckthorn, that should all be incorporated in a very clear plan so that we can issue the appropriate removal permits, and then look at the type of vegetation that's proposed, so we can make sure it's appropriate. It could, it will grow in sun or shade, depending on where the, where it's proposed. An item that, that wasn't addressed in this particular report, although I, I think it was addressed in, in the next one, was the issue of loudspeakers. I don't know that they exist at this location, but it's certainly something that if they do exist, that if this moves forward, you may want to look at including a condition pertaining to loudspeakers. The code, in general, does not permit amplified sound to be mounted in exterior locations. So, that would be consistent with the code criteria. You do have a number of recommended conditions of approval. I've mentioned some enhancements, but I, I won't go through those recommended conditions unless you have questions, or we can talk about those later. But I would just note that, that the neighbors do have some concerns. This is located in a very tight area, and I would just encourage the board to, to consider that, as well as the, the club's desire to add a paddle court. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, I would appreciate it if you would, for the record, put in the substance of the letter from Mr. Preschlack, the neighbor to the west, and also Mr. Bartlett's comments.
Do you want me to read those into the record?
I don't know if we need to.
No.
No, summarize.
And I haven't read them in the last 24 hours, so let me see, see what I can do here. There is a letter in your packet from Mr. Preschlack. He is, his property is located at the end of Knollwood Lane, just beyond the paddle courts. He states, general support for the paddle tennis courts. He noted that on occasion, lights are left on after play, and asks that that be addressed. He did raise some questions about parking, and how overflow parking will be handled. He noted safety concerns on the road. And then, just, just a general comment about, there is activity there, so that does generate noise. Your second letter, included in your packet, is from Mr. Bartlett, and he owns both the vacant lot that's directly across from the paddle courts, and the developed lot just to the north of that vacant lot. And he notes the, the general unkept condition of Knollwood Lane, which is a private road, half on his property, half on the Knollwood Club property. He speaks to the proximity of the proposed new paddle court in relation to the vacant property, expresses concerns about the potential for impact on the value of that property as a result of the new court.
And for clarification, Kathy, I, I'm a bit unclear as to where the undeveloped lot is and the developed lot. And forgive me, but it was dark when I was there last night. Do you have the?
There you go. If you could see, this is, this is Mr. and Mrs. Preschlack's house, prep it to the west. And the vacant lot is right here. It's this triangle right here.
It's a triangle. So, it's buildable, it's been approved. Where would the entrance be for that lot?
The entrance for that lot would be along Knollwood Lane. I believe one of the documents in your packet, I thought, had a better illustration of that. Do you have that, Randy, by any chance? Or I, I do have it.
Yeah, so this, this, thank you. This is, this is Mr. Bartlett's lot here, that's directly across from the paddle courts. Our, our entrance to the, to the back parking lot is right through here. This is a, along this border here, there's a 50-foot conservation easement that's been put in place on Mr. Bartlett's property along this, this border as well as here. And I believe these are 20, 20-foot setbacks along this northern portion here. This little triangle up here is club property as well. And so, on the back here are the, the Preschlack house behind the paddle courts. Along this line, there, they have a fence, they have a wooden fence along, just inside or property line, that, that, like I said earlier, has, has trees and also vegetation along, alongside.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to ask if other board members have questions first.
Mr. Harper, I, I have some big things that stuck out to me. First of all, my wife was a paddle player. She played in Knollwood. She talked about, and I, I'm not being sexist here, but I'm talking about the, the women's league that comes in there, and they park on Knollwood Lane and stop because there's no parking in the lot. You know, and from paddle, if you're going to have four courts, you're going to have 16 players in each court, plus the players that are, plus the people that come to watch, plus the people that are going to play next. I mean, that's an awful lot of cars in that 17-space parking lot that's, that's very ill-configured. And I know that you, in your report, that you talked about utilizing the main parking lot. But it is quite a distance for people to go, especially if they're late for their, for their match. And I'm just trying to be practical. You're, you're, you have a, a 33 percent greater utilization now by adding that court, and you didn't have enough parking to begin with for the three courts you had. So, how else are you going to address that? I know you talked about the, the employees' parking in the, in the main lot. I know you, you are encouraging members to park in the main lot, but you're not only, not only members are playing there, you're, you've got guests from other clubs.
Correct.
So, I'm, I, it's a, it's a big red flag to me, is that parking issue. So, if you could address that a little bit more, I'd appreciate it.
Well, what we, thank you very much. We would also like to do is, what I, what I feel is, would be appropriate, is if we, we notified the leagues, both the ladies and the men's, with some of our parking requests and requirements and offerings of our valet service, and let them know ahead of time before they come to the club. And I, I really feel that it, the most, the biggest step would be to get the employees to move, and we'll, we'll take care of that with operations. But I think if we, we do a lot of notification, and we'll put some signage if, if so desired, and really encourage everyone to use our, our services that we would provide.
Just following up with Mr. Sicari, so how many parking spaces are there at that spot?
There, there are 17 designated spaces.
And, and some of those, if I'm not mistaken, are on, are between two trees, on gravel.
The, the 17 do not count for the, the spaces that are on gravel.
And when I visited there in the middle of summer, when nobody was utilizing that, I mean, it was almost, the parking lot was almost full.
And as I, as I mentioned, being paddle season, when you visited- And as I, as I mentioned, being paddle season, when you visited, it's summer, so we have almost twice the amount of staff. So that number automatically reduces because of the seasonality of the paddle. So I've already had discussions with my staff about the parking concerns on the gravel, as Mr. Serniak and I have already talked about. We'll, we'll, we'll look at how we can better preserve those tree spaces and keep, keep the specimen trees away from the risk of cars or damage by parking.
Is there any other place, I know that staff looked at that. Is there any other space where there could be another paddle ball court? I mean, you're mentioning that the sport is growing. What's to say that in another five years, you may come here and say, "I want a fifth court"? Where would you put that?
Well, great question. As we, as we talked at the board level and in the committees, we, we looked at all the options, and various options, and we looked at moving the entire paddle complex to different locations on the property. We felt at this time, that the logistical challenges that we would face with moving that program away from our main clubhouse, where food is serviced, the staffing starts in the main clubhouse, moving that logistically to another part of the property at this point was not feasible.
But wouldn't it be more expensive later if you needed to add a fifth? Then you have to move everything. You have to move four instead of three. I'm just trying to feel out, this, this seems to be a growing sport, and you've got the room and on the grounds. I'm just wondering, what happens if it has to be expanded again? Where would it go?
Ma'am, Chair, why don't you invite me to the room?
Would you please introduce yourself?
My name is Frank Bestwayze. I'm on the board members at the Knollwood Club, I'm the secretary of the club, and also a regular paddle player, so.
Okay, and I need to have you sworn in before you can speak. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bestwayze.
I appreciate the opportunity to address a few of the questions, given that not only am I on the board, but I've also regularly played paddle. I'll take the last question there. Traditional paddle courts are done in sets of four. So there really would never be a situation to go to a fifth court. The way matches are set up is you play court one, two, three, and four. And so that way, looking down the road, you wouldn't need a fifth court. Additionally, with respect to the way we're addressing this footprint, we're really looking to put this court very close to the exact same specs we've got, the lighting that we've got, and so that impact should be minimal at most. And with some of the new lighting that the chairwoman talked about, we're really looking at actually a better situation than we currently have now. With respect to the flow of players coming, interestingly, by having only three courts, which is rather unique, we have to actually stagger some of the play. And, you know, so like even for men, men at night, we actually play a little bit later because we can't do four as normal. We would just do it and be done. So that would actually have a beneficial impact to say, we play all four courts together, and we can complete play in that respect. So this is really bringing our paddle courts into a more traditional setting, with very minimal impact to any of the surrounding area. We obviously will continue to work with the staff on any of these conditions, but I do want to at least address some of those issues from a paddle perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on Sam's notion of the practicalities of your parking policy. As he noted, the main parking lot is, I would say, a couple of hundred yards away from the paddle area. A lot of these games are played in winter. What is really the practical expectation that people are going to park over there and then walk to the paddle court? And, and, and on that point, will they drive to the paddle parking location first, and then return to the main parking lot? And if so, how do they turn around to do that?
I would, I would answer that question is, we would notify our valet service. We can place a placards at the, at the entrance of Knollwood Lane and document that the parking lot is, is closed or is full. Practically with the use of the main parking lot, we have a diligent staff that continues snow removal throughout the day. Our valet service as well is, is active and diligent about offering their services and being available. So whether it's at 10 o'clock in the morning for the ladies, or later in the evening for the men, we have valet service available, and we'll.
Where, where is the valet service going to be available? Will it be available at the paddle location, or will you have to double back to the clubhouse?
We will, currently, right now, it's at the clubhouse, the front of the clubhouse is just in, on the front side of the bushes, but we will make a policy, if so desired, to have valet service in the back by the paddle courts. I could see that operationally working just fine as well.
I'd like to ask staff about, and the petitioner as well, about no parking on Knollwood Lane. Apparently, that's an issue, and yet I don't see any no parking signs on Knollwood Lane. Is, is there a reason for that? Has it been considered? Is it available? Can the city enforce no parking on those streets?
Because it is a private street, the city could not enforce on private streets. Certainly, as a condition of this approval, you could require that it be signed as no parking, and that the club enforce it. If, if the conditions of the special use permit are violated, it does allow the special use permit to be revoked in part or in whole. So the city does have that leverage upon complaint that the parking lot's being used incorrectly, that any condition is being violated, that the lights are on too late.
The city, however, could not issue a parking ticket.
Correct.
And it's unlikely that the club would issue a parking ticket as well. So it seems to me that the only alternative is to threaten revocation of the special use to enforce no parking on Knollwood Lane, and that's a rather extreme measure. So, please, how are you going to enforce no parking on Knollwood Lane?
As a staff, it's our responsibility to make sure that the environment is safe for members, guests, and employees. And so if, if that's our responsibility to do so by asking members or guests to remove their cars and place them in the proper parking positions, we will do so. But as I mentioned, early on, with adding this fourth court, doesn't generally add more people to our playing opportunities. It just adds the opportunity for that last group to play. And so we don't feel that the numbers will increase dramatically.
I understand that, sir. However, when you embark on a project like this, there are some side effects. You open up a discussion of a problem that's pre-existing, and perhaps may worsen over time, especially as the sport grows, irrespective of whether you build a fourth court or not. So now we have, in addition to addressing the addition of a fourth court, we now have within our purview a discussion of the parking issues, and those include the parking on Knollwood Lane, which you maintain would be prohibited, but I don't see any enforcement mechanisms.
On that point, what I will say, what I'm familiar with, is we have put large stones along the path there. It's, it's an open grass area, so I could see where someone that may be running late may want to just choose to go there, as opposed to go look and see if there's an open spot. I guess from our perspective, whether it's through some kind of vegetation or other, other stone use, that we could create a situation where it's, it's not readily amenable to parking like that. In addition to the enforcement efforts we would do at our club, you know, could be looking to do something that makes that a situation that wouldn't be vulnerable.
So you're saying not, not amenable, but not possible?
Exactly. So, you know, even there, that's a situation, it was never intended for that, but as Commissioner Sicarelli noted, you know, sometimes those things happen.
And if the height of paddle season is in the winter, when those stones would be covered with snow anyway, how would that benefit?
Well, I mean, what we've tried to do is, you know, there's like a banking effect, that when stuff gets plowed, we do create a banking effect. For anyone to park kind of off the side would have been in some kind of early fall or springtime, otherwise there are those stones there that would, would prevent people from, you know, parking there in a regular situation.
And, and I would offer, if that's something that the board wants to see, the condition could be worded a bit more broadly. What came to my mind is, split rail fences perhaps could be used as, as one option.
I have some questions and comments. I, unless other board members.
I wasn't quite finished.
Please continue.
I have several other questions. I'm still not, so the enforcement mechanism for no parking on Knollwood would be, would be strong communication to your membership?
Correct.
With respect to the, the lighting on the new court, you're willing to accept as a condition of approval retrofitting all the courts with the new lighting?
Absolutely, yes.
I note that you would have an automatic turnoff time of 11:00 PM. I also note that the winter club's turnoff time is 10:00 PM. And I believe that is a part of their use permit, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. So, again, perhaps you just addressed 10:00 PM versus 11:00 PM, and your willingness to, to accept a cutoff time as part of the special use permit?
We discussed that as, as far as different options. Currently, with the three courts, there are some times that paddle does extend past 10 o'clock. And perhaps with this fourth court, with, with the ability of having everyone play at the same time, we might not have that late night, or as late of night as we've had currently. So I would, I would request that if we could review that as we, we go through this first paddle season with the renovation, with this new addition, that we could adjust as needed. When Mr. Serniak and I discussed further, we, at the beginning, we discussed 11 o'clock as, as the time, so that's what I, what I proposed. But I'm, I'm more than willing to look at as we review how the programs are adapted through the new season.
Okay. Kathy mentioned loudspeakers. I'm not sure I know what's going on there.
We do not have speaker system at all, nor do we intend to.
Okay, very good. Kathy, are there any city lighting ordinances that cover the lighting proposal with respect to the paddle courts?
There really aren't, because courts wouldn't be allowed except through a special use permit. For instance, if you have a court near backyard, there are setback requirements, that it needs to be 20 feet away, but lights are not permitted. So, no, it's, it's really authorized only by virtue of the special use.
Okay, thank you. Just one last question for now. Did I understand that a landscape plan has been submitted, or is, and you haven't had a chance to review it, or we're awaiting the landscape plan?
I saw a landscape plan up on the screen, but hasn't yet been submitted for review, but it's something that we would require before we would issue a permit for any work on the paddle court. But I just wanted to be clear, no trees should be removed, no vegetation should be removed, nothing should be planted, until we do see that plan, approve it, and get it on file.
And what's your purpose for, what's your vision of the landscape plan? What's its intended?
Our, our vision is for screening purposes, try to prevent some of the light bleed to, to other properties. Similar to how the front of the building look with those large, very large fir and pine trees. But we would work with, with the city and the arborists to make it what's appropriate for that environment.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dixon?
How's that? Thank you.
Well, I had the opportunity to visit last night about 8:45, and there were paddle players at the time, so I also noticed that there were only three free parking spaces, even with just a couple of paddle players out there. I have a series of questions. First of all, while you note that the height of paddle season might be in the winter, is it now a year-round sport?
It's becoming that way, yes.
And around, there is a very tight configuration now for those three courts. And I can't help but ask you, you know, is this, you've asked that you want a professional, meaningful experience for your members, and yet when they're playing, they're looking into the trash and the servants' entrance to the clubhouse. And when you have visitors come for paddle tennis, that's their vision of the club. And if you're coming in the winter, and you're unfamiliar with Lake Forest, and you've never been to the club before, you're just trying to find the way to the lights, you're not going to be looking for a parking lot off another way. I think it would be very hard for you to police that activity, particularly, the parking, particularly at night. Also, it did seem as though there were a number of deciduous plantings, you referred to buckthorn. And it would seem that since so much of the sport takes place in winter, consideration should be given to perhaps a thicker cover with some evergreens. Unless you have a valet stationed at the paddle court, I don't see how visitors are going to find their way to a different parking lot. I have some concerns expressed by Mr. Bartlett, because he does have a buildable lot. He had the buildable lot, Kathy, approved, knowing that it faced the service entrance and the trash. But one thing I have seen on the zoning board is, we do like neighbors to work with neighbors, to see what they can resolve before we might pass our suggestions on it. And I would have to echo Mr. Carlson's comments, that it just seems such a tight fit now, that another court at that location just creates even more problems, exacerbates the existing problems we have. Any other comments or questions for the board? Is there any public testimony? Would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, ma'am. My name is William Moscone, and I'm Mr. Bartlett's attorney.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
I don't know that I'm providing testimony, but I'm here as Mr. Bartlett's representative. I couldn't make it this evening. I don't know a great deal of the situation. Mr. Bartlett expressed to me his great, great concern about the law. As indicated, his lot is directly across. He has to convey the history of the club and failing to maintain landscaping in that area, failing to maintain garbage receptacles in that area, and the constant parking of automobiles in that area. So if they're going to increase traffic, certainly it would make sense to require maintenance of all of the landscaping along the road. Mr. Bartlett undertakes to trim up his bushes on his side of that private road. The bushes on the club's side aren't ever touched. He does have some significant concerns. I know he's been speaking with, sorry, I'll just call her Kathy, I don't know how to pronounce her last name. He would like to see some significant landscape screening, something that will not only limit, if not completely close off, the lighting effect on his two properties, but also possibly the noise, something that might reflect the noise that's going to come from that area. He wanted to be here this evening. He's very concerned about it. He believes it will have a significant monetary impact on his investment on those two properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Any other testimony?
From the public?
Right. Excuse me, but I'd just like a moment for everyone to be able to collect their thoughts, to make sure we don't have any other final questions. And I know I had one. What is the construction period for a paddle court?
Approximately two weeks.
I would now like to open that up to board discussion and comment. And I would certainly feel more comfortable considering this proposal if I saw a workable landscape plan, a better parking arrangement. It, to me, it just seems extremely tight now, and I don't see how, how your suggestions rectify the current situation, let alone give room for the fourth court and the accompanying.
the current situation, let alone give room for the fourth court and the accompanying
I agree with those points, Madam Chair, and to that I would add that I don't have an inherent objection to adding a fourth court. I would simply like to see these issues addressed, the parking in particular, and the landscaping and lighting issues that pertains to a potential nuisance factor with respect to the neighbors. So, I too would like to see the landscape plan. I'd like to see not only a parking lot plan, but perhaps a little stronger or better defined parking strategy for how to practically handle the situation at this location. And then finally, I would like to see consideration of the 10:00 PM versus 11:00 PM, and we can discuss that amongst ourselves. I think we're, it's a little tricky if we have two different mandatory times, two different parts of the city. You know, somebody's going to come back and talk to us about that.
Well, I'd say those are very different situations. Certainly, there are far fewer residential structures close to the paddle courts at Knollwood as opposed to the Winter Club. And as with Mr. Bartlett's property, a number of them are setback, I think 50 feet or more from the roadway.
Where did the 11:00 PM time come from?
I don't remember if it was in a previous special use permit. I would have to look that up. I was thinking it was, but I can't say for sure unless you remember.
I can't remember.
And then I would add one more thought with respect to the overall landscape plan. Again, I think it's reasonable to ask the club to maintain the landscaping along the road so there is no obstructed views going around that turn. There was today when I drove over there, and right in front of, I believe it is 936, you know, as you round the corner there. But those are my thoughts. Again, I want to find a way to approve this project.
I have to agree with Lloyd and with Madam Chairman woman that that parking configuration really needs to be addressed along with the landscape project, a landscape proposal. Also, the relocation, possible relocation of that garbage facility. I understand that trucks have to come in and get to that easily, but it just seems that right in the middle of where that's at is a bad location and could look at relocating that and possibly utilizing the rest of that area back there around those specimen trees that could be utilized as parking.
And perhaps those issues, Sam, could be addressed in the landscape plan. And since the plan just arrived within the last few hours, I think further digestion of the plan needs to occur with our group as part of the approval process. And that, I hope, Frank, that the spirit of neighborly cooperation can exist with Mr. Bartlett, and perhaps you might be able to guide some sort of collaborative exercise between the landscape plan and Mr. Bartlett so that there's at least some sort of quasi-consensus between what you plan to do with the landscape plan so that that can be shared with Mr. Bartlett at some level. And through your leadership and ability, you might be able to address that matter.
We will definitely do that.
May I make one suggestion?
Sure.
Step forward.
Please, if you could step forward, that would be terrific. Thank you.
I don't know much about paddle, but I would also make a recommendation, since this is an additional court, that maybe a restriction be put in place where if all of the courts are not being used, that the club be limited to using the courts furthest away from the residential area. So, in other words, if they only need two courts, instead of making that new court available, they can restrict play to courts that are furthest away from the residential areas. Just a suggestion.
Perhaps that can occur during your discussions with Frank and his team as the landscape plan is being reviewed.
Well, I should ask, Mr. Kristof?
Yes.
Would you care to make a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to table this for further, for the landscape plan and for further information.
Lloyd, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I thought you guys made some pretty good additional suggestions.
Thank you.
The garbage and the courts, maybe first use them where they're closer to the club and further away from the residence.
And I think that there is a spirit in the air of approval, but perhaps that we can work through some of these differences as part of that approval process.
Agreed. Because part of what we do here in the city is to get everybody together and happy.
Not necessarily all the time.
Sounds similar to what I do. That's my recommendation.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I will second the motion.
Do we have a second for tabling and receipt of these additional reports, including landscaping, more site planning for trash, service parking, and service traffic?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, can I just state that that was continued and continued with the intention that it will appear on the next zoning board, Board of Appeals meeting?
That's correct.
Unless it can't all come together, just for purposes of published notice. Thank you.
All right, our last item for the evening is consideration of a request for an amendment to the special use permit for the Winter Club located at 956 North Sheridan Road. The proposed...
Recession for just five minutes.
Oh, sure.
Okay. We're going to call a short recess before the third proposal. Five minutes? So, we'll adjourn until five minutes to eight. Thank you.
Will you turn it to me? I don't know. It's been a bit of a...
Yeah, right. Yeah. It was a little slow.
You're here. This was the first time.
Oh. Wow.
The meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Lake Forest is now back in session. However, we have just received some new information, and I'm going to give the board members a minute or two to read it. Thank you.
Our next item of business is consideration of a request for an amendment to the special use permit for the Winter Club located at 956 North Sheridan Road. The proposed changes include the addition of a paddle court, modification of parking areas, and expansion of the club boundaries to include an adjacent property currently owned by the club, owner of the Winter Club, Representative Peter Whitmer, architect. And I will now ask board members if they have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts.
I have a statement, Madam Chairman woman, I'd like to address. I don't have any financial interest with the Lake Forest Winter Club. However, I do have my brother and attorney, John W. Dixon, who is the immediate neighbor to the north of the Winter Club property, directly behind the two existing paddle tennis courts, and my family are members of the Lake Forest Winter Club. Therefore, in the spirit of... Therefore, in the spirit of transparency and the consistent with the City of Lake Forest Code of Ethics, Madam Chairwoman, I'll be recusing myself from tonight's petition being brought forward by Rich Massa, Peter Whitmer, and Jeff Circumer, Todd Altonian, and the cast of friends that sit on the other side of the bench there. So I will now be excusing myself from the bench and observing the proceedings from the public gallery.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. We appreciate it showing no hint of impropriety in these hearings. And who will be planning to speak tonight?
So, thank you, Chairwoman Kerr.
I'm sorry.
I will identify myself. I am Jeff Circumer. I am the president of the Winter Club.
Okay. And I see Peter standing behind you.
Peter will be accompanying me as well as Rich Massa, our GM.
Okay. We have a procedure here where we ask anyone who will be speaking to swear an oath first.
Absolutely.
So, anyone who may be speaking on this proposal, could we all have you take the oath at the same time? In your name, sir?
Rich Massa.
Rich Massa, okay. Do each of you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And now, please proceed.
Great. Thank you, Chairwoman Kerr, and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. As I mentioned earlier, my name is Jeff Circumer, and I am the president of the Winter Club. I'd like to provide just a couple of opening comments, and I'll turn it over to Peter Whitmer, our architect, to go over some of the technical items, and then Rich Massa, our general manager, to kind of discuss policies and procedures and things like that at the Winter Club. So, before I start, I want to also say I have a deep appreciation for the ZBA, not only because I did serve as an elected official with the Village Board of Trustees in Lake Bluff, and I can certainly understand the challenges, but also the priorities and the focus of the group and trying to make sure that everything gets processed appropriately. As mentioned, we are seeking two proposals for approval, and one is the annexing of property, and the other is modifications of the special use permit. And as discussed, and as you've heard earlier in the other situation, we are seeking a fourth paddle court based primarily on demand has surpassed our supply. And we're well aware of the issues that we have to address with that, and some of the other requirements and policies and procedures that go along with that. And therefore, we're seeking, most importantly, your guidance, but also ultimately the approval of the board. So, without further ado, I'll hand it over to Peter to handle and discuss the details of the proposals.
Thank you. I'm Peter Whitmer, Whitmer &amp; Associates Architects. I'm also a member at the Winter Club and play a lot of paddle, too. So, even though this project doesn't have a lot to do with architecture, it has a lot to do with planning and really fitting in the neighborhood and understanding how sort of coexist. And so, I'm presenting the plans tonight. Rich is here really to go over more of the policies of the club and which is, you know, a good portion of this. But what I'd like to do is just kind of walk through the floor for the site plan. Sorry, that's being a little bit light, but this is the existing plan. And there's really two parts to this, is one is the addition of the fourth paddle, and then the second is a small expansion of the kitchen, which really requires us to annex the residence which the club owns into the club and into being part of the special use permit. So, the existing, this is the street to the west, and the three existing paddle courts, the paddle hut, existing parking lot, a hockey rink slash tennis court. It turns into, right now, it's, actually, they have three small junior tennis courts. And then, in the fall, it turns into the large hockey rink. This is the small hockey rink, or a tennis court in the summer, a little grass area, patio space, a little building which houses a double squash court and a single squash court, and a little building which has the condenser and chiller, which provide the cooling for the hockey rinks. This is the residence, existing garage and house, and another residence which is owned by the club, which then fronts onto Sheridan Road, two tennis courts in the summer turns into parking in the winter, and then the existing parking lot in the clubhouse itself. Here's our proposed site plan. Let's start to the west. What we're proposing to do is basically align a fourth court up with the other three courts, and basically have a minimal walkway, and then basically shift the parking spaces or the parking lot thirty feet down. The court's thirty feet, the walkway's four feet, so about thirty-four feet to the south. The openings, the existing opening to the parking lot is just about here where my little arrows are showing, and so that shifts to the west. Then this is just the large rink again. We're proposing a new, obviously, to shift the opening in, some landscaping, actually not as much in the existing, because there's some large existing pine or oak trees here, but to fill in a few areas which are some holds across the existing courts, and then some lower vegetation in this area. So that's the paddle court place. And then here is the residence. We hatched the area of the site plan of that residence. And what we're proposing here is to add a walk-in cooler basically outside the kitchen to have more space in the kitchen area, and then shifting the fencing so that you can walk around this, which the property now comes into that corner. And then also utilizing their existing paving area by opening and opening in their existing fence, coming in and then being able to park in this space and closing off the drive that comes down, and allowing this residence then to just have its garage and its parking there. Well, there's just a quick landscape plan. What we're proposing is actually to, there's a couple of trees right along the parkway, which we'll be able to retain on this side. There has been discussion in a meeting that we had with the neighbors in a previous fence replacement, they had some concerns about the wall, stockade fence being a wall, and they really felt strongly about having fifty percent of that fence open. And I think, there's a small photograph here, you can kind of see it here, that we'd like to retain that so that it has this opacity to it, so that when you drive down the street that it doesn't create a wall. That was important to them, and so we'd like to retain that fence. And if that fence were to be replaced, replace it with the same sort of opacity of fifty percent material there. We'd like to continue the solid fence then that's along the existing courts, basically the thirty-four feet to the edge of the opening, relocate the signage to this point for the opening. And then we have a little bit of a ground cover, lomo, and then some arborvitae trees to be planted, basically in this whole area where the oak tree canopies are a little bit thin. And we thought that that made more sense to help cover the courts. This is just a rendering showing that, these existing trees, this is that existing fencing, then the new fencing with the signage. The court itself, well, we have a more modern style light fixtures on the other courts, so there'll be eight lights with the cutoffs, and the new court will be the same, four hundred watt metal halide poles. Basically, the new court will be identical to the existing courts that we have. We have a lot of the same issues as the Knollwood Club. We have, the only thing that I would say that is different is that, obviously, the context is different. We're in the east side in the historic district. We understand that. The other is, is that our parking in this is, we have about fourteen spaces when the hockey rink is up in this, and then we have the parking lot on the other side of the clubhouse, which has about a hundred spaces when the tennis courts are down in the wintertime. And it's, you know, we've had our, and Rich will address this, our parking issues, and I think, you know, we have policies that can be in place and have done some things to police that, to better address the parking issue. This is just a rendering of that open area with the arborvitae looking at, these are the existing courts. Actually, this is the last court, and then there's a third court down. This is another rendering showing that landscape. I think with that, I'll turn it over to Rich, and he can review some of the policies and some of the other aspects of the club for you.
Thank you, Peter. First, thank you for this opportunity, kind of the new kid on the block. Three months at the Winter Club, five years in Lake Forest. A lot of what I've learned, there's a lot of tradition with the Winter Club. Trying to put myself in all the different types of shoes of taking on a project like this, being in education for twenty years, kind of put on a teaching role, and figured out the best way to describe policies and procedures to how we're going to handle some of the issues. I can assure you, we are taking a very proactive approach, you know, acknowledging that there are issues, acknowledging that we are trying to come up with policies, and we've implemented policies and procedures. And forgive me, I'm not sure on protocol, but I do have a copy of some of these policies. Can I give them to you? Is that part of the process? Is that okay?
Yes, we don't have time tonight.
No, that's okay. This is more, like I said, I guess this is the teacher in me, trying to give, that we've, you know, trying to be very proactive in our approach, and this gives you some of our, as listening to before, for the Knollwood Project, there is a lot of concerns about parking. We do have boulders in place. We do have an overflow lot. We do have a valet system. I guess the best way that we're looking to attack these issues is through communication and presence and monitoring. Monitoring for, we do have a large usage of spots being used to make sure that lots are closed off. The main part, I guess what I'm trying to get across is, we need, we will be having people there, because that is the best and first, our front, first line of defense, to be able to handle those issues. Having staff members there. Do I just turn this over to you to kind of give you this handout for some of the procedures?
That's fine.
May I come forward?
Sure.
And this just addresses our parking issues and kind of our plan of attack, so to speak. Listening to before to Nolan's presentation, trying to make sure that we were handling that. The other one is part of my role, to be honest with you, as I see it there, is to monitor and to be aware of incidences that happen and to be able to address them firsthand. And that goes back to with communication, with membership, with the town officials. And that's kind of, I know I didn't want to take too much of your time, but to kind of give you an overview.
Well, I think this is an issue of importance to people, and others out there or, you know, listening to the broadcast may have an interest in this. I think it's short enough that I would ask you to read it for the record, please.
To read the policies and procedures?
Read your policies and procedures for summer and winter season parking.
Yeah, sure, sure. Some of the procedure follows. For the summer season, staff, Winter Club staff park at the Lake Forest City Lot off Scott Street. They utilize the east asphalt parking lot, including along the fence. Utilize the west asphalt parking lot. Overflow parking will utilize ballfield area managed by a Winter Club staff member on scene. Rare use of the Church of the Holy Spirit parking will be utilized with their permission. Then fast forward to the winter seasons. Staff park at Lake Forest City Lot off Scott Street. We utilize east asphalt parking lot, including along the fence. When a lot is full, a staff member will block off the entrance and direct cars to our other lot. Overflow parking will utilize, excuse me, the front tennis court area. Four major winter, the events that we have will have valet parking, where company will either utilize the City of Lake Forest parking and permission of the Church of the Holy, excuse me, the Holy Spirit. All cars parked on the parkways will be warned of the impending City of Lake Forest citations and be told to move. As we know, parking is not allowed on that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
And are there any other parties who wish to speak on behalf of the Winter Club before concluding the petition?
No, I think that's our presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And now we would like to get staff's comments and identification of the issues, please. Kathy?
Thank you, Chairman Kerr. Just to review, the request before you is for an amendment to a special use permit. This particular request includes a request for approval of a fourth platform tennis court, a minor shift and expansion of the lot directly to the south of the existing paddle court, expansion of the club boundaries to include one of two residential properties owned by the club. This property is accessed currently off of Sheridan Road, and the expansion of club parking onto this property, 936 Sheridan Road, which will be used for employee parking. The issues for this petition, many of them are similar to those for the Knollwood Club that you just discussed. There is one fundamental difference in that in 1991, a previous amendment was approved to the special use permit to allow the addition of a third court. The third court was added on the north side of the two existing courts, and one of the conditions of that ordinance stated that the club would not request approval of an additional court unless there was a substantial change in facts or conditions. Given that that was a condition, we certainly heard the Knollwood Club representatives say that a fifth court would never be needed because play involves four courts, but we know from history that two courts have been used and three courts have been used. So I think the fact that this condition was included in the special use permit is something that the zoning board needs to consider very carefully. And the burden really is on the Winter Club to demonstrate that there is a substantial change in facts or conditions. And I guess I would look to you first, kind of as a threshold issue, to see if you are satisfied that that change has in fact been met, or that that burden has in fact been met. But going beyond that, I think the issues, again, some of the issues that you heard are the same. Certainly concerns about lights, concerns about noise, concerns about level of activity. In this case, unlike the Knollwood Club, the Winter Club is completely surrounded by single-family residential homes, and it fronts on public, not private streets. So that brings in a little bit different perspective on some of the issues. In addition to those issues, certainly the concern about perimeter buffers, really on all sides of this property, and streetscape treatment, since these are, the Winter Club has frontage on Public Street, both on Sheridan Road and on Wisconsin Avenue. I guess the last issue that I would note, again, something that came up in your previous discussion, is just the whole issue of enforcement. There is an existing special use permit. That special use permit does require that the lights be turned off at 10:00 PM. I have heard that on occasion, that isn't observed. So I think the whole enforcement issue and how do we make this use, the current use compatible, and how do we look at changes or expansions, and continue to work to increase the compatibility of this use and be respectful of the neighboring residential neighborhood. You do have a recommendation from staff in this report, and again, that starts with really discussing that first fundamental issue. But then going beyond that, really looking to challenge the club a little bit, to look at some alternative site plans, to look at, if you choose to move forward, to look at some opportunities of shifting the court away from the zoning setback along Wisconsin Avenue. Currently, the court, as proposed, does encroach into that front yard setback. Look at ways perhaps to further screen the parking from Wisconsin Avenue. Currently, it just kind of is there on the streetscape, and as I think you've mentioned before, that in coming forward with this kind of request, it really is the obligation of the board to listen to concerns of neighbors and to see if some current issues with the property can be addressed, and perhaps in exchange for granting some approvals for exchange for granting some approvals for additions to the club or modifications, that there also are some other obligations, which may include things like looking at enhancing the perimeter boundary all the way around the club. With respect to the request to add the small lot into the boundaries of the club, looking at that property, it, it is really almost meshed with the club at this point. It is a lot in depth. It has no street frontage. So it, it does sit back there and really is almost totally surrounded by the club, or at least it feels like that. The request before you is that the special use permit acknowledged that the Winter Club owns that property, and by doing so allows it to be used as part of the club property. Currently, it is used as a single-family residence for a club employee. There is, if you visited the site, you saw that there is a fairly large pavement, paved area on that property. This proposal doesn't propose to change that pavement in any way. If in the future, there was a proposal to increase the pavement or change the pavement, or do anything different with the house, perhaps there should be a condition in this special use permit that states that at that time, a significant buffer should be established around the perimeter of that property to really look forward and prevent conflicts with neighbors in the future. Neighborhood comment, I will mention that you received two letters this evening. One from Mr. Fellows, one from Mr. Lansing. So you have those in front of you, and I think you've had time to read those. I also will note that in the case of this petition, it's a bit of an unusual situation in that I also received a number of calls from other neighboring property owners who, because of the nature of the club, the fact that some may belong to the club or may have some affiliation with, with the members of the club, they were not comfortable with, with coming forward. I did, as staff always does with neighbors who express concern, I, I did certainly tell them that I would review their concerns with the board, but I also made them aware that certainly hearing those concerns come from staff may not be as effective as if you received a letter from them or heard from them in person. But I, I did want to note that, in general, those comments raise concerns that the club currently is not a good neighbor, that there are some maintenance issues, either with vegetation dying and not being replaced along the perimeter, with, with maintenance care being taken of, of the, the parkways. They have concerns about levels of enforcement with respect to lighting, with respect to parking, concerns about lights remaining on, concerns about loudspeakers, which, as I've reviewed the special use permits, I don't see that loudspeakers have been authorized, and that may be an issue that we can address through this. So just, just a general level of concern about existing conditions and a concern about increasing the level of intensity and how that will impact the surrounding neighborhood. So I just wanted to pass those concerns on, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, just as a follow-up, about how many neighbors contacted you?
I heard from four neighbors who I believe are not in attendance here tonight.
And people who belong to the club, or was it beyond four people who called you? Or, just trying to get an estimate?
I received calls from four, four people who I don't believe are here. They may be here. I, I don't know that. But four people who expressed concerns to me that they were not comfortable either appearing or sending letters.
Okay.
You have letters from, from others, but those were not, those are not the, the refer, the people to who I'm referring.
Well, and I would simply state for the record that the letter from Fred Fellows has a number of issues raised within it. Some in common with the Knollwood Club, and others, I think, more specific, given the context of the club within a residential neighborhood. He lists 15 to 20 concerns at least. And then there is another letter from Mr. Lansing in general support, not unlike Mr. Preschlack from the Knollwood Club. However, he does point out that sometimes the sound system can be loud in the winter, but he does consider the Winter Club a wonderful community asset. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question. I have a comment. This neighborhood is, has there been any development in this neighborhood? Other, I mean, is there any new construction in this neighborhood in the last 20 years?
There certainly have, has been, there certainly have been homes that have done a significant amount of renovation, homes that have done additions. Off the top of my head, I can't recall a vacant lot that has been developed, if that's what you're asking, but there certainly has been investment in properties in the neighborhood.
Well, there's been investments in properties. What about roads? Has there been any new roads in here, in this, in this particular part of town?
No. The, the road system hasn't been in place for many, many years.
Well, in just looking at the petitioner's request, I have a problem with this because the 1991 special use permit, to me, says that there will not be any additional paddle tennis courts in the future. That's what it says. Except that if there is a substantial change in facts or conditions. I don't see that addressed in this petition, and I haven't heard anything addressed this evening. So what are we considering? I, I, that's a problem for me. I don't know about the other members here, but that's the way I read this, and it doesn't just say facts. It says substantial facts. Let's hear them. I'm sorry, but I don't see them.
No, I understand completely. That was 21 years ago, when, in 1991, the paddle program at the Winter Club started in 1970 with 20 members. In 1991, when they went to go to three courts, there was 100 players at that time. And then today, 21 years later, there is 100 in 90 courts, almost 100% increase in, in use of the paddle facility. The other thing that, that is unique, and it was mentioned in the Knollwood program, is, is that because of the series play and the number of players that play at once in the league play, four courts makes a lot more sense than three courts. If you look at the other clubs in the North Shore, I would say there's a predominance of four courts, not five courts, but four courts and three courts. Unfortunately, Knollwood and, and our club are, are one of the ones that, that have that. So by 100% increase from 21 years ago, that's what we feel is a significant difference between what was approved back in 1991.
I have a question on...
Well, I'd, I'd like to go with that for just a second. Kathy, did, can you give us any sense of what the original intent of that statement in the '91 SUP, was it meant to say no future paddle tennis courts? And what conditions needed, needed to change in order to leave the door open for a possible addition?
I can tell you my sense from reviewing the record. I was not here at that time. The bottom line is, the condition says, says what it says, and that's what's in the ordinance. But in reviewing the record, there were concerns from neighbors at that time. There were concerns about intensification of use of the club. When the club was originally established, it was a, a children's club. Certainly in '76, there was a change, and there was a approval of, of two paddle courts that really made it more of an adult club. Paddle primarily was played in winter. I, I think you've heard that it's becoming a more of a, a little bit more of a year-round activity. But as I read that condition, it was a response to neighbors who said, "We're concerned. We're concerned about what you're doing by adding a third paddle court, and what that's going to do to traffic and noise and lights, and how do we know that you're not going to come back in with a fourth?" So I, I think it was a response to neighbors' concerns at that time. I think there was some wiggle room left. And, and that's that phrase that says a significant or a substantial change in facts or conditions. And I think, unfortunately, that's the record. We don't know whether that meant a substantial change in that paddle is more, more of interest now, or the number of people playing paddle went up, or whether the facts meant the Winter Club acquired more property and there's more room to spread out. And that's really why I'm looking to you for interpretation.
I, I would just, if the intent was behind the, the prescription of, of future courts, if, if the intent behind that was the neighborhood concern about growth in the sport and the noise or the traffic that it engenders, you've ju, Mr. Whitmer and Mr. Mass, apparently, you're indicating that that is the change in the condition, the very one that the, the initial intent was trying to, the initial ruling was, was, was trying to avoid. How would you respond to that?
I understand what your point is. The only thing I can tell you, though, the difference between having three courts and four courts allows play to happen faster, so that actually the use of the courts over time is actually less. We're not going to change to 190 members using the courts on our three courts. That's, that's going to go. So if we start practice at eight o'clock in the morning, it will run until 12. If we have four courts, we can do that faster. And the same with the play in the evening. It really, instead of having one team start off and not being able to play all at the same time, it means it one course less. Therefore, we run up against our 10 o'clock curfew quite a bit. So that's, I mean...
I, I hear that argument, and, you know, quite honestly, it also creates more time to add more players during the course of the day. So, you know, it's kind of a...
You know, I, I, that's...
And, and that's not the issue. I mean, you know, unfortunately, this is a technicality. There's a, there is a ruling on a 91, a 1991 special use permit, which specifically prohibits the addition of future paddle tennis courts unless there's a substantial change in the facts or conditions. And the only facts or conditions that you're offering so far are increased play. And that's the very foundation of the reasoning behind the 91 prohibition against future courts. So I, we're in a box here, I think.
And I want to just follow up with Board Member Culbertson. I mean, if, if the answer is that the substantial change is that there's more players, then why not a fifth court? I mean, you could say, this is the substantial change is that we're going to have a whole bunch more of people playing paddleball. But I don't think that answers the ordinance, I mean, the special use permit. It says a substantial change in facts or conditions, and I have to be, I mean, in my opinion, I think that means a material change in something in the neighborhood that changed. I, I don't think it means that more players. I, I agree with Board Member Culbertson on this. It just doesn't seem that, that's such a bootstrap argument to try to, to me, avoid the 91 ordinance.
And I might be, you know, I, I might suggest that there are potential avenues to argue the case. You are adding additional property. There's been a suggestion made that you could enhance the landscaping perimeter of the entire property. There could be measures taken to improve noise and sound insulation or lighting, protecting the neighborhood from lighting. Those are just a few to think, you know, somehow some parking strategy to alleviate parking conditions. Those, I think, could be argued as material changes in the condition of the property. But just increased play, I don't think is going to carry the mail here.
I, please, go ahead.
I also, I mean, it is the Winter Club, and there's quite a few summer activities that are there, but winter seems with the two ice rinks and the paddle tennis brings a lot of traffic, not to mention what happens inside, whether there be bridge players or whatever that goes on inside the club. How do you handle all that? How do you handle having only 14 parking spaces down there when you've got a hockey rink right there? And how do you handle the noise that's addressed by, by, by Mr. Fellows? That from, you know, the loud noise with the, with the loudspeaker and the music and, I mean, it's a lot of things going on in the residential neighborhood. Mr. Mass, I know you weren't there three, because you've just been there three months. That's why I asked Mr. Whitmer.
Absolutely. But I just, I wanted to bring something, and you guys would probably get to test more. But when the Winter Club was originally started, was there not some type of toboggan run or some type of luge? I don't know if anyone's heard of that. That was something that the club did have. I, I know, I'm just trying to see if I'm tracking with where...
Mr. Mass, can you please speak in the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. I, I'm trying to track where, where we were going before as to, from the 1991 issue, as to where we are now. We have evolved. We've evolved as a club. We've evolved with a, a love for the sport since the 1970s with the paddle. We have an increase, not just in our adult programs, we have an increase in our children's program. We have more kids playing paddle. While we understand that it does seem to be a very, a dicey situation, or play on words on what the 91, what the, the ruling was, that has been some of the change. And I guess what I was trying to go with the toboggan one is that, that was something that was with the club for a certain amount of time, and they've gotten rid of it. It's evolved. The club has evolved from the hockey, from the tennis, to the paddle, to our pre. We've had that process, which leads us to where we are today, with the numbers of, of membership. And I'd like to stress that word, membership, playing in there, because over the years, the membership cycles have changed. We've had years where we've been in large demand and other years where we've been, quite honestly, not where we would, would have hoped as a club. But throughout that one constant, or I guess what I'm trying to get at, and I'm hoping I'm able to connect the dots, is that our members are playing more, and we're trying to address that need. And I'm hoping I'm addressing your question before, sir.
I have a few more, if I, if I may.
And then, I mean, I can also touch on the noises.
The reason I brought this subject, and Richard...
Yeah, sure, Richard.
...brought it, while we're all talking about it, because as staff has indicated, this is the fundamental starting point. If we can't get over this hurdle, we can, you know...
And I can respect that, absolutely.
You know, so I, I think what you're hearing here is that we question whether that condition has been satisfied, and we'll, we'll need a satisfactory response, I believe, from, from the petitioner at some juncture.
Sure.
The, I do have some other questions, although, Madam Chair, do you think I should pursue them as long as this question is the, is the most basic?
I have one question that I'd like to get out, because I think they've focused on the number of paddle players, and yet, hasn't the intensity of use in hockey and other activities also increased at the Winter Club because of its popularity?
It has, and it's also gone in cycles, though. I mean, if we were to look over 10 years, 20 years, I mean, you've seen programs at one point in time increase and one, it's, it's almost like a roller coaster type of, you know, when the interest is. So I hope I'm answering your question, that there has been an increase as well in our hockey program as well as other offerings.
Well, but now I will defer to Mr. Culbertson for all of his remaining questions.
Well, again, I, one still is remain to this, this, this fundamental issue. And I would ask staff, is, is there any transcript or minutes of the 91 meetings where we could actually reference or get some indication of what the original intent was?
I believe we, we looked for those, and they were very cursory, but I can certainly go back and, and verify and provide you with what is available.
To the extent that might be helpful to establish what their, what, what the intent was at the time. Just a, just a few more general questions. Is, is there, is there temporary parking permitted on the tennis courts now?
Yeah. Yes, sir. I want to address that, and there was a couple other similar related questions. So with parking and the 14 spaces, during the winter, there could be an ice hockey game, and there could also be several paddle matches being played today. And in the front of the club, which is off of Sheridan Road, there are two full tennis courts that we lift the nets and convert those into parking. In addition... In addition to the-
How do you get in and out of there?
The fence comes down.
You take the, is there any driveway into the tennis area?
Yes, there is.
I didn't see it. Where is it? Is it off Sheridan or is it off the driveway?
When you come off of Sheridan Road, there's a driveway, the main entrance.
If you look here, this is the two tennis courts?
Yeah.
And you can see, this is the parking spaces that are, there's about 52 spaces here, and you drive in this way right off the drive and then drive in that way.
I didn't see any, anything off the drive into the tennis courts. Any paved, you just drive over the grass, or?
No, no, there's a, there's a curb cut there.
There is a curb cut.
There's no-
I missed it. My bad, I missed it.
Yeah, they just removed the fence and it's basically-
Okay.
Yeah, if you pull in today-
How about in the back where the basketball court is?
Here.
There's two tennis courts and a basketball area.
Right. During the winter, that's where the rink sits.
Right. What do you do with it in the summer?
It's used for the summer camp programs.
Is parking permitted there?
Parking is permitted there in overflow, as well as on the baseball field, that's that open field there.
I would just observe there was, there were two cars parked under the basketball net there, and there were still nine spaces available in the parking lot when I went there this afternoon. It was kinda weird. If you wanted to play basketball, you're kinda out of luck, but the-
Mr., uh, sorry, I'm sorry. Board Member Ciccarelli would like to make a comment.
I would, along what you're talking about.
Sure, sure.
That number of parking spaces seems greatly exaggerated. Because I look at the parking space, the parking lot right next to it, just to the west of that tennis court, and it's only, the square part is 14 spaces and two more is 16 spaces that are lined. Now you're telling me that, that you could put 50 something spots in this, in the two, you know, in the two tennis courts without it being lined? There's no li- I mean, you've got lines for tennis, you're not gonna put lines for parking on those. I see at most getting 27 or 30 spots and they're not 52. I don't know how you could get 52 unless somebody takes your keys and valets it for you.
Sometimes we have to do that. The lines are covered, there are no parking lines, but the tennis lines are covered in the snow typically.
No, I understand.
Sam?
Yeah, that's, he did mention there's parking, yeah, there's already parking there, but in addition to, there's plenty of parking in the, in the lots. And if there is an overflow, that's where we, we will work proactively with the Church of Holy Spirit and work on having people bus there. We also do enlist and pay for Sid Services to do valet parking for other events and things like that.
I do want to just address one particular thing to Chairwoman Kerr. There was a discussion about, you know, hockey and growth, and I was on the rink's chairman in the past couple of years, and hockey growth at the Winter Club is down primarily because we have a, we have a small window of a season then versus a lot of the travel programs that are around. And it's primarily a very young sport at, at the Winter Club, and then kids get pretty good and they leave, they fly the nest and go play somewhere else. At its peak, we had over 125 kids play hockey. We're now about 109, and just a couple of years ago, we were in the 80s to high, low 80s to high 80s.
And do you know historically what it was in 1991, when you last came before the board?
In 1991, I don't have that number, and I don't want to guess. I do tell you, squash was a bigger sport then, and we have hardly, very little play in the two courts that we have today. And so there, therein lies some of the evolution that's gone on from just the demographics. We have a larger number of what we call post-regular members, which is members that have, their youngest child at home is 14 or above. And there's, there's a greater group of that than ever before, and it's primarily because they're playing paddle and other outdoor sports, more later in age than back in 1991.
I don't know if I should ask you or Peter this, but I'd just like to, the reconfigured parking lot, the curb cut's gonna move to the south, that's correct. About how far from its current location?
It's about 34 feet. Basically, the edge of the existing lot, this is the north edge of the existing lot, and this is the south edge of the existing lot. So just visually, it's, you know, it's south edge is basically where the north edge of the new lot is.
I see, okay. There is a, currently, there's a pedestrian sidewalk on the south side of the lot, and-
The gate.
In the new plan, there doesn't appear to be one.
The, there's a gate opening in the south, and I think we're thinking that we would have another pedestrian gate opening.
But it's not on the plan?
No, we have not indicated that on the plan.
Correct. So would you consider adding it to the plan?
Sure, yeah, no, I think-
Unless you don't want it. I don't want to force you to do it, I'm just questioning it.
It's a, it's an open walkway, and it's wide enough for various- For, for multiple cars. And because there's not any sidewalks on that side of Wisconsin, there's not a lot of foot traffic, except crossing the street from the other side.
All right, all right. Speaking of Wisconsin, is there, are there no parking signs on Wisconsin? Do we know?
Yes. They're right, on the fence, they're located on the fence here. And then we've also put some-
Has that been a problem? I don't know.
It, it has been a problem, and I think a couple things have happened. One is, is I think the police have been policing it, and that's helped quite a bit. And I also think now, the club has, understands the problem and, and really has tried to rectify that. And I think the boulders have helped, too.
I'm sorry?
The, the large stones that have been placed along that edge helped, too.
Yes. Turning to the location of this new walk-in cooler addition, I note that you're going to move the fence. What's behind that fence right now is where you collect the garbage. Is the garbage collection area going to be?
Actually, that's not modified. That'll stay, if you looked, I don't know if you looked in there where the dumpsters are now?
I did.
There's a smaller fence right along the, the west side of that. That will actually be, change to a taller fence, and so the dumpster pad will basically stay the same. And then you'll come around that.
I see.
There's a, there's a little void space in here that really is not used for anything.
The, I think I got that.
Yeah.
I might have to go back and look.
I have a couple pictures on my phone of that area, because I, it is a tricky little space. But it seems to work out well in terms of the, the fencing in their existing condition.
Okay. There is a, currently, there's a driveway back to the 936 Residence and Garage-
Correct.
-off of Sheridan. And parallel to that is the entrance to the Winter Club off of Sheridan.
Correct.
All right. The proposal, as I understand it, is to put a, is to bring the employees in the club entrance-
Correct.
And then they cut through to this padded area through a new opening in the fence.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
What would prohibit them from turning into that residential driveway?
We're proposing to put a new fence across the property line, basically, so that you would not be able to drive through that.
So that would be an east-west fence?
That would be a north-south fence, going across the drive. I didn't, I've added this, on your plan that we submitted, we didn't have this on there.
Ah.
So this is a new, and what-
Oh, I see where it is.
You see where it is here on this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that, that would shut that off. It also makes it so this residence-
I'm sorry, you're right, it's a north-south, right.
Yeah, it's a north-south. And then, so this residence can use the garage and basically-
So it would, it would be to the back of the 944 Residence?
Correct.
Okay. All right. But it would be completely cut off there?
Correct.
All right. And I think that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Board Member Culbertson. Mr. Krista? Mr. Ciccarelli?
Kathy, I always wondered if there was, if we had to consider the whole special use permit as one, because there's three different parts to it. The addition of the platform tennis was one, the enlarging of the comp, of the competition ice rink was one, and the third one was annexation of the res, of the reds, residents on Sheridan Road. Can we take two of them and approve those and, and continue the other, or is it all one package?
I would suggest that you can certainly approve part of it and disapprove another part, but if you're gonna continue part of it, I, I would suggest rather than doing this incrementally, I think it would be more effective to have a single special use ordinance that, that lists all the conditions. You can certainly indicate support for one or more elements and kind of tick those off.
I had a question about the historic structures that you own at 936 and 944 North Sheridan Road. As it says, both homes are noted as contributing historic structures in the city's local historic district. Could you tell us a little more about those properties and your intention?
Currently, the club manager lives, Rich lives in this house here, and, and I think that, that the previous manager lived there, too. And I think the club, it makes a lot of sense to have someone who is integral with the club live there, because that house is part of the club, basically, if you walk back there. The front house is rented out to, as a tenant, and I think, you know, at this point, obviously, when they purchased the property, they'd like to control the borders of, of the club and thought it was a good opportunity to do that. At this point, I think we're renting it out and, you know, have no intention to do anything else than that. And we would be, if we were to change that, we would come back in front of this board and go through the zoning process, plus go through the Historic Preservation Commission to make any alterations to that building, too. So that, you know, that we, our thoughts right now are to rent it out, and if we were to change it in the future, I don't want to get into a situation where we're, have the language of the third court into this, so that, I would say that, you know, our intents right now are just to rent that out.
I have to note that parking in the winter with snowbanks is very tight. It's a wonderful community facility, and when I drop my kids off there, the circle in front of the clubhouse is very tight. There is parking all along the southern boundary there.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a little difficult to negotiate, and there were no vacant spaces. And my guess is there were birthday games, birthday parties going on, paddle tennis and hockey, all at the same time, and I am not sure what else. And this I see as a very different proposal versus the Knollwood Club, because you are within the context of a residential neighborhood, and because of the 1991 wording in the prior approval.
Just another question, if I may. The, the subject of loudspeakers came up in the prior conversation as well. Does, could you, Kathy, could you repeat what the conditions are for loudspeakers? Or is there a prohibition against loudspeakers in public space?
In general, the code does not permit amplified sound outside buildings. For instance, the Grill Restaurant on Laurel Avenue wanted to have amplified music for the outside dining, and that is not something permitted by the code. Again, this is a special use permit, it could be specifically authorized, but as I review the approvals to date, there's been no authorization, and I know that is something we heard from the neighbors, both, both music on the hockey rink, and also from the concession stand announcing that, that food is ready.
Would the petitioner like to respond to that?
Sure. Basically, amplification is for the hockey rink. A hockey rink's been in existence since, when was the original, Lake Forest College played there? And I think in the 40s or the 50s?
Yeah, 40s.
In the 40s. And they need amplification at that point to, to do, basically to call a game. Also, too, the high school used to use that rink, and that was, and so their use prior is, is, is for the hockey rink. There has been some discussion about relocation of those speakers, so that they would be less intense. But in terms of the paddle facility, there are no speakers related to that.
I guess I would ask staff, is, if it would be technically correct for us to consider some kind of language in a, in an updated SUP with respect to the use of amplified sound?
That's certainly the prerogative of the board.
What happens if we just ignore that? I mean, what can, could neighbors technically challenge the use of amplified sound based on ordinances on the books?
Anyone can challenge anything. But I think, as you said earlier, as these institutions come forward and ask for changes or, or additions, that's an appropriate time for the board to look at the special use permit and try to address issues that are out there, and maybe make improvements.
That's all I have.
Any other comments? Well, I'll make a few comments and then you might have some more, how's that?
Well-
I, I do note that it's a very intensive use of the site as it is, where you are part of the fabric of the community. I, I don't see you in some ways as a separate business, although you are. I see you embedded within the neighborhood, but I do see that the use has intensified during the 10 years I've been here. You're trying to fit an awful lot of activities in a small space. And if we look back to 1991 versus now, there could be questions raised, not just about a fourth paddle court, but is it just too intensive use now?
I'm gonna reserve my comments till after public testimony.
Yeah. I think I will.
All right. We would like to open this up to public testimony. And anyone who would like to speak, I am going to ask you, identify yourself and then be sworn in.
Hi, my name is Liz Brandal, and I am a neighbor at 1020 North Sheridan, which is two doors north of the Winter Club.
Okay. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
Yes.
Please proceed.
I just really want to echo, I think, some of the letters and the comments that have been raised, read from other neighbors, that there are issues with sound. We are second door away, so we don't have issues with light, but with sound, and ours are really more in the summer, when there's special events and there's a DJ or something. There's a lot of, you know, the noise carries over and, you know, interferes even with when we're using our backyard. The other is that in the plan, we really like how they're improving the landscape on Wisconsin, but we're very disappointed that there's no addressing of the landscape on Sheridan, which is poorly maintained and is actually pretty shabby in general. And then our other concern is the impact with the new parking and just the changes being proposed, the impact on the traffic flow in and out of the Winter Club on the Sheridan Road entrance. Because, especially in the summer with the summer camps, with the people coming through during certain periods of time, where they specifically, you know, restrict either, you know, left turns and things on Sheridan Road, which makes sense, but there are instances where members will whip through the horseshoe driveways of the two houses to the north and use those as turnarounds to come back and to avoid that left turn, and there are children in those homes. So I realize that's something, you know, the Winter Club can't manage their members, but it is just something to be aware of, and we want to understand the impact of either additional usage, or will there be additional traffic being sent through the Sheridan entrance versus the Wisconsin, or how that'll be managed? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes. And your name, sir? And your name?
Fred Fellows.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Stand here, or?
Oh, over there, I think it's better for the camera.
Great. My name is Fred Fellows, I live-
My name is Fred Fellows. I live 440 East Wisconsin, directly across the street from, I guess, most of the west side of the Winter Club. And for the public record, I like all these guys. I love a bunch of them, and they're, hopefully will still be my friends. And anyway, my wife didn't want me to raise any public objection, but it's not really a personal thing. It's really, I think, what I was trying to accomplish is try to, you know, produce comments that were trying to be prudent and fair and reasonable. Been involved in commercial real estate and in and in business for, since the mid-'70s. And so I've seen a lot of stuff, and I've kind of absorbed that, and I was trying to figure out what was fair and reasonable. And that's when I actually talked to these guys, or a couple of these guys, a couple months ago. Anyway, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's not a personal thing. I just think it's fair and reasonable. Second point I wanted to make was, this is a residential neighborhood. It's a historic residential neighborhood. The character and charm of it is unique. It's beautiful. The Winter Club has, which I love, I love the energy, frankly, as living right across the street from them. And I believe the Lansings, I actually, my two acres provide a good buffer between the Lansings and the Winter Club, so it doesn't surprise me that they might be supportive of the project because of the buffer that I provide them. I have put, I think, 18 trees in on the parkway in the past 18 months. And I think, based on the research that I've done over the last week, because this is, actually came to me very short notice, is that I think that one of the core issues is similar to what we find, or the country saw in Houston. And I know you guys, or Peter, thought that was funny, but Houston, until 15 years ago, never had zoning in a master plan. And you could have a Ritz-Carlton next to somebody's house. And it really diminished the character and quality of the town, but it's been rectified. And as you all know, obviously, the master planning of commercial and buffering and industrial and creating different activities, and it's there for a reason because there's, you know, a lot of, to respect other properties and to come up with something that's cohesive and it's attractive. But anyway, this is a residential neighborhood, and it started off as a daycare. And then they put in a pool in 1917, and they added the tennis, the hockey, which is fantastic, and it's neat because it's during the day. And, you know, there really isn't much PA. You referenced that there's the use of PA systems for hockey. There really isn't. I mean, they blow a whistle. But, because, so anyway, my point was, it's a residential neighborhood, and I'd really like to see it stay that as, you know, if we took a bed and breakfast and had it morph into, just by buying the properties next door so that there is no objection, I don't think is appropriate, you know, necessarily. I'm sure if they didn't buy the property on the front lot and rent it out, the homeowner there may object to the property right behind them. So, I mean, if we keep expanding this, it's no longer a residential neighborhood. And at some point in time, it's just, it's not unreasonable to ask to stop. I mean, they're taking away things from the historic neighborhood. They're not giving us more. But I totally respect and understand why you guys do it. I love sports, too, and I love activities. So anyway, I'm sorry to digress, but the other thing, I think, as part of this process, frankly, I think they opened Pandora's Box. And I think hours of operation should be reconsidered and enforced. And if they can't be enforced, there are certain things that are conditions that people ask that, you know, ramifications. I've heard of people that, you know, put up a shed. They had to tear the shed down because, you know, it didn't meet the guidelines. And I think that there ought to be a reconsideration based on the activity level at the Winter Club that would be deemed appropriate in a residential neighborhood, especially a historic one that provides a lot of the character of the entire town, city of Lake Forest altogether. The, uh-oh, time's up. My last point is, you know, the Winter Club, as it evolved over time, did not have the intense traffic on Wisconsin Avenue. Not in 1991, not in 1956, not in 1940. The entrance has always been on Sheridan. There were parking spaces that were striped and put on a plan, but were not necessarily proposed and measured or even regulated in any manner back in 1991, when they put the court in and I saw the plans and so forth. In my opinion, there should be no activity on Wisconsin Avenue, period. If they need to have access, that is one thing, but to create a second entrance on a road that's 25 miles an hour, not, I don't know what Sheridan Road is, 30, I think is, in a historic residential neighborhood, should be reconsidered. Anyway, it's not personal. I love you guys. I love Lake Forest. I frankly love the energy. I think it's cool. I love hearing the kids, you know, playing over there, screeching and stuff. It's so cool. It's a, and I would agree that that quaint nature of the Winter Club is irreplaceable. And with that, I'll finish. Does anybody have a question for me? Okay, good.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitmer?
I just wanted to ask a couple more questions. On the material, you know, getting past the first hurdle and really coming back and thinking about it. And I think, you know, one of the reasons, obviously, Winter Club's been there since 1902, and it's a fabric of Lake Forest. It is an establishment that's important, and we're gonna stay. And there's, I'm sure, through its long history, has always had conflicts with residential neighbors. I would suggest that we look at other alternatives for the court locations. And I would say, when I understand material differences, you're saying increase the size of the property? Therefore, I would think that there might be an alternative that we would say, okay, do we balance it? If we need to increase the size of the property, we own these two houses, we ought to tear the houses down and put courts there, as an alternative. Would that justify a material difference or not?
From my own part, I would want to know what activities were present in 1991, how many participants, how many club members, and how different is it today to see?
Okay.
And other board members may have some other...
I guess what I'm just coming back to see where the, you know, what the thresholds are. Because my understanding is, you know, hockey, they used to have three ranks in the 40s, and they had a lot more intensity in that, and just kind of understand the history of that.
I don't know. I wasn't here in '91 or on the board, or I didn't have anything to do with this ordinance that was passed in '91. But just as you mentioned, Winter Club has a lot of history, and I agree. I'm sure everybody here on the board agrees. But the city of Lake Forest, when it passes its ordinances, that's a history, too. That's been on the books for over 20 years. And that, it means something. We have to read it as that it was passed for a reason in the form that it was. So that's why it's important to us to be able to get past this hurdle, because we can't believe, I'm sure no one on the board is going to take the position that this ordinance was enacted or approved unless that language meant something.
I think we could research better to try to understand. '91 is, 21 years ago, there were a lot of people here. There's still neighbors that are there. I think we can try to understand that and get a better feeling for what that was, and really try to come up with some better logic in terms of how to address that. And then, you know, furthermore, I would say also address some of the issues that have come up tonight in terms of, you know, lighting, landscape, maintenance, parking, those sorts of things that we can come back with in a more cohesive way, and really just try, but my, you know, my first concern is getting over that first hurdle. Because if your board can't get over the threshold, then I think, you know, it makes the project much more difficult. Obviously, we won't go forward with that. The other piece then would be, if we can't get over that hurdle, then I think we would look to split the thing up into two different pieces so that we'd have the annexation of the other piece and then drop out the paddle piece to that. And we may bring that back as an option, too. Do you understand? Because that's not part of the special use in '91 ordinance. It seems to make sense to me to do that. And can we get a read on the support for the annexation of the residential property into this and the modifications needed to expand the kitchen piece to that?
We can address that in our discussion.
Okay. That would be helpful, because then we just have to understand what the board is, you know, the feelings on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think in your desire to be a good neighbor, that you take Mr. Fellows', Ms. Lansing's, you know, concerns that they brought up and put that all into your discussions. Because they talk about not only sound, but they talk about hours of operation and, you know, traffic patterns on Sheridan Road. And I know when I visited the site today, that it was difficult to pull out on Sheridan Road at certain times of the day. And for people to be using private property to be using as a turnaround, I know you have no control over that, but there has, there, it should be taken in consideration that's to be done, that you only come in, and there's no left turns, you come in for right turns, you know, something, something that addresses that point. Because the last thing we need is any traffic, any more traffic issues. Okay?
Thank you. All right. Shall we take a few minutes for more board discussion and comment?
I think so.
Okay. Then that's what we'll do.
We have to consider what we're gonna do with the motion. Well, again, the fundamental point is, I should have memorized this wording by now.
Substantial change.
Substantial change of condition. I would submit that the petitioner, and this is directed at my fellow board members, I would submit that we suggest to the petitioner that they come back with a well-reasoned argument that would support...
Compliance with that provision.
Compliance with that provision.
I think so, too.
It's not enough to say that we have more paddle players.
That wouldn't, I wouldn't be convinced by that just alone, unless there was something else.
In fact...
Unless we can ask Ms. Sarniak.
I actually, Kathy handed me the minutes from the Plan Commission meeting of June 10th, 1991.
Ah.
And I, I'm not gonna read them here unless Madam Chair requests me to. It's just a couple of germane paragraphs, but I would urge the petitioner to get their hands on these minutes.
If it's a couple paragraphs, I prefer to have it in the record.
Again, this is quoting the minutes from the June 10th, 1991 Plan Commission meeting, specifically responding to neighbors' concerns about lighting, noise, and further development of the Winter Club. And I'll just turn right to the third one, okay? Mr. Birmingham, who I presume was the general manager of the club at the time? Yes. And by the way, the chair of the commission was also in the group at the time. Howard Kerr was chairman of the Plan Commission at the time. Mr. Birmingham then stated that "The final area of concern, further development of the Winter Club property, had been reviewed, and that they, the Winter Club, do not have any plans for further building on the property." Chairman Kerr then questioned Mr. Birmingham about the letter from the neighbors specifically addressing the question of having a covenant placed on the property. Mr. Birmingham responded that "It was not in the best interest of the membership to have more than three paddle tennis courts." The experiences of other clubs in the area has been that the availability of more than three courts invites leagues and tournament playing, which is not in the Winter Club's interest. And then later on, and that's the club's position, and later on, the motion was adopted by the Plan Commission to include a covenant approved by the city, be placed on the property restricting future development of the property.
Is that the request to the club?
No, that's the, that's the Plan Commission's recommendation to City Council. Now, what would be curious there, Kathy, is whether or not there are minutes that, because the next thing I see here is the actual ordinance, or the actual, yeah, the actual ordinance granting the special use permit that is approved by City Council. But there's no, again, there's that dicey language, that tricky language about substantial changes to facts or conditions that was inserted in the final ordinance. There's no mention in that I see in the minutes of the Plan Commission that talked to that subject. So the City Council evidently came up with that. And I don't know if there's any minutes or documentation that would, that would indicate their line of reasoning, but I think, I think...
No, we're not open for any questions.
I think these legal issues, and maybe we can consult, you know, the city attorney as well, and I don't know if there's a way around this by way of amending, recommending amendment to the special use permit. But we have to address this issue, I think, as a technicality at the very least, just before we can proceed in a, you know, in a proper legal manner.
And I would agree with your suggestion to talk with the city attorney as well.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. In fact, I'll make a motion that we do that and that we continue this hearing until we receive perhaps further information from the club as to compliance with the term in the ordinance from 1991 that we've discussed earlier, and also until we get a report from the city attorney as to what his or her opinion is on this issue. That's my motion.
Well, and we've also requested...
Conversation with the neighbors.
Conversation with the neighbors and additional information about the Winter Club back in 1991, statistics on its use and membership numbers then versus now.
A second.
Second.
Is there any, just a brief discussion. Kathy, is there anything else that staff would suggest be included in the motion, or?
I think that covered it.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is carried. And Mr. Fellows, the period for public comment had passed. That was to board discussion. Do we have any other actions this evening on the agenda? We have the opportunity for the public to address the zoning board of appeals on matters not on the agenda. Any other comments from staff? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
On matters not already on the agenda. So the time for public comment on that has passed on the Winter Club. All right?
I second.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.